2012? A pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and just-
Can we have roll call please Kate?
Certainly.
All right Knutson?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Kidd?
Here.
Pureborn? Bryson? Evans?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Are there any agenda changes or-
Yes, item 8.1, the discussion on findings, it will not happen tonight, we'll bring that back later.
Okay. You've all received a copy of the minutes of the February 21st, 2012 Planning Commission meeting in your packet for review. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The minutes for February 21st, 2012 have been approved. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items and agenda items 6, 7, and 8? There's no public tonight, so we'll move on. There are no final orders, resolutions, and written communication. There's no public hearing scheduled. There is no old business. And new business? You just said there's no 8.1, is that correct?
That's right.
So we will discussion, visioning for commercial use and character in Lincoln City.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, Richard and I put together some slides and we thought we would just have an opportunity for you to tell us what you think about commercial use in Lincoln City and we have some expertise on the commission, so that'll be good. We want to start out with just a question about what do you think of when you think about commercial use in Lincoln City? What immediately comes to mind?
Retail.
Retail. Is there a specific area of town? I bet there is for you.
(laughing) Well, Nell Scott of course, and then Ocean Lake.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else?
But then a little bit of Cutler City. I'm starting to see that too.
Okay.
That area.
Like, what do you mean?
Well, Robies and the, what is Lumbermans now?
Proville.
Proville, thank you. Yeah, and the gallery.
Mm-hmm, Freed Gallery.
Freed Gallery.
How about anybody else?
I'd like to see more business opportunity in the Taft area. I know for a fact I would like to put a business down there if there was space, and a lot of people that would.
Is the style of building or category of business, does something jump to mind?
Tourist friendly.
Tourist friendly, yeah.
At least that's seasonal, but I think that's very helpful for a good portion of the year here.
That's pretty much what we do, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah. Well, we, um, we'll talk a little bit about what we have in our ordinance right now, and we'll try not to get into too much detail, but we do have some photographs from various kinds of commercial use around town and after, after a couple slides, I always put in a slide that asks for your thoughts on what I'm showing. So, this is just a conversation, we don't have any agenda here, we just want to hear from you. We do have a couple things coming up. Richard mentioned that we'd had a request for neighborhood commercial, so, you know, that's something to keep in mind. And other than that, we don't have any, any particular requests or anything, so we just, but we just want to get a sense of where you're at and let you know what's in our code. So, first of all, we have the general commercial zone, and that's our basic zone. It is the broadest in terms of the uses that are allowed. It allows drive-ups, for instance, and some of our other zones don't. It basically follows the highway on both sides, except where we have carved out other special zones for areas such as Nell Scott and Ocean Lake.
One thing to point out about the general commercial zone, the maximum height limit there is 45 feet, and it's different in other places, and we'll get into those. General commercial is really oriented towards retail uses. Things like motels and so on are allowed, but the intent is for retail.
And is that the only zone that has a cap on square footage?
Yes.
Or footprint?
There's a 60,000 square foot footprint cap on buildings.
Just the buildings? Not including parking?
No.
No, just the building, footprint of the building.
And that is, that does not include, you could have a bigger building if it were more than one story.
Right. It's just the footprint. You could have 180,000 square feet in a three-story building.
But that is something that was a significant discussion a few years ago.
Yeah, that was adopted principally to protect local businesses and keep out big boxes like Walmart or Home Depot, Lowe's, those kinds of, Target, those kinds of buildings, which typically are 120,000 square feet or more.
Okay.
Well, and because we do allow that size of building, but not the footprint, it also says something about what we want in terms of the style of the building and the look of the building, I guess.
Right.
Yeah. I haven't been here long enough to have been part of that conversation, but Richard has. Okay, here's Cutler City. And there's the Freed Gallery in the middle there. Robies must be behind me. Okay. Nobody mentioned this, and we thought that would probably be one of those things that, that maybe jumped people's mind. When I was talking to other people, they did mention this as their first image of retail in Lincoln City. And there's the inside, of course. And how long has this been here?
Boy, um, it's before I moved here.
At the early 90s?
Moved here in 91.
I believe it was early to mid 90s when they built- I don't think it was built when I got here in the late 80s.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was being built in the late 80s.
And then, of course, we have, this is our newest retail building, and it is about 45,000 square feet. This was, when they originally purchased the site from the city to build this store, the parking lot that you see in front was owned by Tanger. And only after they got their approvals did they manage to acquire the parking lot in front. So, even though our commercial design standards try to encourage buildings to locate closer to the street, in this case because of the sequence of purchase, we ended up with a more conventional looking situation where you have a big parking lot in front of the building. Okay, any thoughts about general commercial?
Quick question on parking. Does the city exert any control over the, how parking is, that's the word I'm looking for, how it's laid out? Whether you're going perpendicular, whether you're angling in, anything like that, or is that up to the owner?
We have a variety of standards that are acceptable forms of parking, whether it's straight in or angled or what have you, and it's largely at the discretion of the developer, whether, how they want to configure it, whether it's straight in or pull-through, or what angle they use. A lot, just depends on how much space they have, and how many parking spaces they need to try to fit into that.
We have dimensions drawn in some graphics in that section of our ordinance, and you can look at it and you can see that if it's head-in parking, the stalls have to be 20 feet in length for a standard stall. If it's angled, you know, there's slightly difference there, and the aisles can be, will change with the angle of the parking. So if it's head-in parking, you need 24 feet for the aisle, so that you can pull straight back and get around in the direction you want to go. If they're angled parking, you can get by maybe with a 13-foot wide, one-way aisle. So, you know, it allows the designer a lot of flexibility there. And that's usually what, yeah, dictates the, the design of the parking lot. We do have requirements about landscaping, and in the general commercial standards that I may get into later, it requires for parking lots over 20 cars that, there's a maximum of 12 in a row before you have to break it up with some landscaping in an aisle, most likely. So, so we have some characteristics that we're, we're trying to deal with. Why did you ask?
I was just curious. Some parking lots work better than others, and I was just curious why, say, I don't want to disparage Bymart, but theirs is very difficult to park in. I have found with a truck, and I'm just kind of curious, well, who designed this? But if it's their choice, it's their choice.
If it meets our standards, we, we may make suggestions, but we accept it. In this case, they were, if you're talking about the part closest to the street again, you know, that was a pre-existing lot, they made some changes to it.
No, just general parking, just going in and with a full-size pickup.
I see.
It's tough, because I think they're making things for the smaller, mid-sized vehicles and-
They can have half of their parking spaces be compact sizes, which is 8 by 16 as opposed to 9 by 20, which is the standard size.
I don't think they do, it's just, it's a minor point.
We also have, you know, required number of parking spaces for various uses, it's set out in the zoning ordinance.
Will we be talking about things other than commercial tonight, industrial or other business uses?
The plan is just to talk about commercial tonight.
But if you have something burning to say, we-
No, not, I'm just focused on an earlier comment, which was the focus along 101. And in some areas, you know, you and I have had discussions about geologic issues, and whether or not as part of the commercial planning process, envisioning if you will, any thought has been given to expanding the commercial retail area of the city on 101 to higher ground, so to speak. You've started with Bymart, you've got Tanger, you're up at a reasonable height. Is there any thought about continuing some of that, perhaps away from inundation zones? Do developers and store operators are not building in harm's way, that they may have an alternative?
Not for that reason, but there has been, like with Ocean Lake, with the urban renewal plan for Ocean Lake, one of the main purposes of that was to encourage retail development off of 101, between 101 and the bluff edge essentially. There's pretty high bluff there, so it's out of the inundation zone.
We, um, unfort- well, unfortunately, attractive areas in town like the D River, for instance, where the wayside is in the, in the state park and so forth, businesses like to be there. But that also is an area that's a tsunami inundation zone, so it's an attractive-
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm thinking about is threading that fine line between what's attractive on an episodic basis for a visitor versus what is sustainable over the longer haul, so that there is some balance between the two. Perhaps focusing, and again, you know, we're not talking just about commercial, but about industrial and other uses, expanding that footprint, not just into our zone, but expanding those supportive zones or the business zones in a way that would perhaps change the footprint a bit over time, and begin to focus away from high-hazard areas to lower-hazard areas. And I just, you know, again, we're visioning, we're just talking about everything. You know, it seems, you know, it's easier to mitigate than to repair.
Right, right. It's possible, like along the northern approaches to town, one possibility. Also, speaking of villages at Cascade Head, one of the provisions in the Planning and Development Ordinance would allow that master plan to be amended to include commercial uses for, it would, it would be on higher ground probably, but also the idea there in terms of sustainability is to reduce the number of trips people need to make, in other words, have a, have a commercial node there, was the idea behind that.
I have a comment regarding similar. One thing I've noticed is, is like D River, you know, I think people would rather build and see it wash away and rebuild, because that's where everybody wants to go. You need the foot traffic for small business to survive, so where are people going to go? Lowest ground to the ocean, right? That's why D River's so desirable, Taft is so desirable, that's where everybody goes. There's generally some decent parking available and there's good foot traffic. That's what keeps little businesses alive. Your Bymarts, you know, your bigger stores, they're going to survive pretty much anywhere they're at. I live in that neighborhood and to this day, it still surprises me, I'll drive by and go, oh yeah, that's right, Bymart's there. You know, and I live right up the street, I drive by it every day. Four months now, almost five months it's been there, it sort of catches me by surprise being in that neighborhood, but it's doing a good business. I don't know what they think, but plenty of traffic, it hasn't created any big issues in the neighborhood or anything else, and, but small business, the mom-and-pop kind of businesses that really rely on people to be there, the foot traffic, available parking or short walking distance, they're going to want those desirable places, and they're probably willing to write their business off once every 100 or 200 years that the tsunami comes through, because they're going to want that business now. At least that's an opinion of mine.
Yeah, that, you know, and that kind of area is one of the reasons that small businesses gather, but there's also, there could be the critical mass, what's called a critical mass of a certain number of stores that would basically, they would reinforce each other, and so they would end up being attraction in themselves, and that's been, that was discussed, oh, five or six years ago, I guess, when we had a study done for, as part of our buildable lands inventory, looking at, from the tourist development standpoint, you know, what do we have that would draw people here, make them get out of their cars? And one of the things is, we need this sort of critical mass of shops where people would have a reason to get out and spend more than, you know, a few minutes there, you know, spend, spend a number of hours. And that's one of the things that they recommend that we promote, is some way to encourage the development, not just in the sense of new buildings, but the development in terms of making someplace nice that people want to get out of their car and experience. One of the things is the beach, the river Taft, where the, like where kids can play safely on the beach there, because there's, there's small waves in the bay as opposed to elsewhere. And, but there's also, there's other places where people could get out too. I mean, the mall's a good example of that, you know, people get out of their car and spend time there. And it would be possible to develop something like that, or, you know, that kind of node where people would want to get out of their cars and spend some time with various, like probably forms of encouragement from the city it might take at this point, I don't know, but it's not just, just those natural things that, like the beach that make people want to, want to get out of their car, there's, there can be other reasons too, and just the right mix of retail.
I think, I think you're right. If you could go to a place and you could find a candy store and a certain amount of restaurants and a coffee shop and a place to buy flowers or whatever, and the right mix with available parking or short walking distance from parking to where large colonies of people can meander, be pedestrian-friendly, have places to sit, places to sit down and have a meal outside if you so desire, I think that would be a great attraction and meet the same thing. If they could see the ocean, that would be okay. Even then, maybe not, but you've got to have the right attraction, and right now it seems to be, our biggest attraction is the ocean.
Yeah. And it can be just attractive buildings too. I remember once I was, I was driving up the coast and I was going through Nahlem, which, you know, if you blink, you've missed Nahlem, but there was a group of three or four stores there that had just really fixed themselves up nice, nicely painted, they had flower baskets and everything, and I mean, I literally screeched to a halt, what's this? I gotta get out and check it. Because it was really attractive, and I think, you know, it really drew people. That kind of thing can happen too.
It'd be great if we had the ability to develop a boardwalk, you know, those seem to be really popular, but absolutely. We had a boardwalk with lots of little tiny, you know, and arcades and all that that attracts, you know, families and so forth, and allow a certain amount of lodging around there, so short walking distance from decent lodging, I think it would make us boom a little more also. Again, it's going to be seasonal to an extent, but still going to make us boom.
No, I fully agree with that. I mean, you go down by Mo's, and that's one of the busiest areas there is, just because you have a nice, unencumbered walk, you can step out onto the dock, look out at the bay, whether, for whatever reason, it's just, it's something to do, to look at the water, look at the seals play, the seagulls, the pelicans, whatever, and it's a nice, free activity for a family to, to partake. And I know as a, when I was a young parent, that's what I looked for constantly. Where can I just take my kids, it's not going to cost me an arm and a leg.
Yeah, that's, that's a real issue, what can you do with kids here?
Right.
You know, another thing about retail and its location is that we are trying to make an effort through mixed use to put residences within walking distance of commercial. And this is where the neighborhood commercial idea comes in, but also in some of the new development that we have on, is it 15th that has the mixed use northwest? And also in some of our other zones, we encourage, strongly encourage, mixed use development. If we get, and this is where, another way of getting a critical mass, you can get a critical mass of businesses or you can get a critical mass of residents who need to go someplace to shop, and if they can just walk downstairs and, or across the street, then you, you don't have to worry so much about providing parking, and you can, you can have a more dense commercial development as well. So, it's another approach.
If I remember the area just outside of Hillsborough that was developed.
Or Rinco Station.
Rinco Station. That's just an absolutely spectacular area. Something like that developed here would be, you know, you've got people living over the top of these buildings, condominium or otherwise, you've got your Starbucks and your this and your that and your everything, and they don't even have to leave their little community if they don't want, they could probably live, work, and sustain their life right from that community, which also means less fuel being burned.
Sorry?
Well, one of the interesting things about that, Dennis, I was the president of the association there.
Really?
And, the, it started out as a kind of a broad spectrum of potential buyers, and ultimately focused in on retirees and empty nesters. And so it was a very low-impact area for the school system, but a very high tax impact, because a 1,400 square foot house was valued, you know, with a tax of $32 to $3,600 a year. You know, pretty steep for a whole house with a zero lot line or a common wall. Was, in terms of tax revenue, was, was a pretty good, pretty good situation. It was very, as you say, very, very compact. You could walk everywhere, there was only one location for mailboxes, walk to the, you had to walk to the store to get your mail, which forced you to the stores.
And that'd be greatly desirable in a community like this, I feel.
That was probably some extent what you were thinking about with the villages-
Right.
-the Cascade Head, where you could have that kind of self-contained or barely well-contained commercial residential development.
So, what was the transition between the commercial and the residential? How did that work?
It was basically along the Cornelius Pass, Cornell, where, you know, the big major arteries were where the pure commercial were, was, and even the commercial for the Rinco Station faced that road, so people that were driving by could see it, and then on the backside-
It's where the housing?
Was where the housing was.
Okay.
So all of the commercial just had the standard feel to it, even the condos and lofts and the, and the stores at ground level all faced, for example, 101. Behind it was that intense development of 386 housing units.
So, from the, from the housing unit, could, was there a buffer between the housing unit? No, so it was just attractive?
Right.
And people, people's units faced the commercial and-
Transition were brownstones.
Okay.
So you had, you did in fact have a transition from single-family or from row homes or town homes to the pure east coast, Boston, row home brick situation.
And they faced the commercial?
And they, they were right in the commercial.
Uh-huh, okay.
You know, they backed up to it and they were, and right next to it. There were, it gave the psychology of those people who were comfortable living in a brownstone could be right next to neighborhood commercial, restaurants, several bars, Starbucks, and then as you moved away from that, you had areas, I've actually got all the maps and everything.
Oh, yeah, it'd be interesting seeing that.
But it, but it was an interesting, interesting concept, and it, it sold out almost instantly.
Did the commercial that fronted on the arterial, were there doors facing the arterial?
There were doors facing both directions. For instance, New Seasons, actually had doors and a storefront that was on the arterial, which was Cornell Road. The backside was another entrance and a full parking lot, so the parking lots were off of the major arterial, they were back inside.
Okay, so did anybody use the door off the arterial?
Oh yeah, all the time.
Oh really, okay.
And you could, you could go either, in either direction. And they, they continued that along, across the street when they put in additional shops in a purely rental development, where the, where the rental units were above the shops that faced on the street also. So it was a fairly intensive mixed use. It was mixed, it wasn't just one here and one there, it was mixed right within the building.
The only thing they do have there that we don't have here that would make that attractive is, is technology all around there. You know, people living in, in that area and driving to Tektronix or-
Five or six Intel.
Yeah, Hewlett Packard or any of those, I mean-
Employers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Large employer.
And it's right on the Max train.
Right.
Right on.
So you've got everything that you would want right there, so it's not exactly apples and apples to what we would certainly have, but it would be very desirable to feel in a community like this.
Is there an area in particular where you think something might, an area of the community where that might work there?
Well, you know, what it goes to is, is part of that thought that I mentioned earlier, which is the long-term visioning about how you want things to develop, not just commercial but industrial and other activities that bring in heavy-duty jobs and form a basis. I've had some discussions with some of the community leaders and, you know, talking about, well, how do we get commercial in here? How do we, or not commercial, how do we get industrial in here? How can we begin to position ourselves so that we're not tourist-dependent completely? If we've got a community college, how can that support development of technology and those type of activities that would be looking for the skilled worker? Many of those things, you know, they all, it's all of one piece, it's not just- those things, you know, they all, it's all of one piece. It's not just commercial. It's not just industrial. It's not just educational. It's that fabric fifty years down the road or twenty years down the road. So the next folks that come along aren't completely dependent upon, but appreciative of the small commercial development and those things that are tourist and that type of orientation, which is, you know, will never go away.
Why can't we have the Google or the Yahoo or the Facebook or whatever, other than they take up more than that foot, that big box kind of?
Yeah.
Policy right now. But wouldn't it be beautiful to be, have this big old building, technology, you know, that can see the ocean? Airport would have. All the people would come, and a bigger airport, yes. But where, is there a big airport where they are putting it in?
Sure.
Well, you need to be able to get your people in and out. That's true.
Yeah. You've, you've got.
Let's Bay Airport, it could be expanded, you know.
But you also, you also need a huge amount of power.
True.
To do some of those things. And that may, you know, PP&amp;L may be your limiting factor.
Yeah. Power and water, like, those kinds of industries, you should use a tremendous amount of water, surprising amount of water.
But, you know, again, I agree with everything that Dennis was saying and, and on about, you know, the orientation, you know, for the families and the tourists and we're, we're talking about it. Think big. I mean, that's what Hillsborough did. They thought really big. They, they, I don't know if you're aware, but, but Enco Station was a reconsolidation of plots that had been carved up originally. Planning director there, Wink Brooks, looked around and said, "None of this allowed enough critical mass to attract the kinds of infrastructure, or the kinds of industry that we need over the long term." The city went back out, bought all of the parcels and reassembled them, put them back out for sale on a large enough scale that Intel could build their largest plant in the world there. You know, it goes to that kind of really long-term strategic thinking, not just the tactical issues of the strip along 101. It's, you know, do we have the opportunity to acquire, notice one of the topics here on these doubts were eminent domain, you know, or are there ways for us to get additional properties that would allow that kind of zoning and that kind of use, rather than just reacting to where people want to be, but to drive the agenda of the plan? I mean, I'm sure that's, I'm up in graduate school somewhere.
Well, eminent domain is not allowed for economic development anymore. Is that correct?
We can't buy it for private purpose. The city can't condemn it for private purpose.
Well, but.
But possibly for assembly with nothing in particular in mind. I don't, I don't know. I'd have, I'd have to read the Kelo decision again and see what, what else has fallen out of that.
But, but there, you know, there are, there may be other opportunities.
Right.
There may be other land holdings, you know, EFU or something, that border us, that could be picked back up at that rate, at that cost, rather than at a higher cost for future development. So, you know, I apologize for taking this off message completely once again.
It's okay.
You know, if we're talking about commercial development, you know, it's just one, one piece of the puzzle.
I appreciate it. You know, I have feet in a couple camps here on this because I try to balance, okay, are we going to talk about how we develop vacation-friendly spots at retail or for the people who live here? Do we want to encourage more people to live here? Do we want to encourage more people to visit here? Or do we want both? Where we talk about, we don't want big-box retailers? Well, that's okay, but I have to drive to Newport twice a week to get what I need. Are we encouraging driving there? Yeah. I've got to go there to get what I need. It's not available here.
You get, what do you get for your restaurant?
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Just living here full-time, we do have to leave once in a while.
Yeah.
Everything's not available in Lincoln City that a guy might want to go by, so.
And it's also.
Garden, for example.
Well, and, you know, I'm a new transplant here. So I've been here full-time, I think I'm going on my fifth, sixth year. When I came here as a, as a visitor and just as a vacationer, my plans were totally different. I was at Devil's Lake every weekend, or I was out crabbing. I was out doing the touristy things every weekend. Now that I live here, I haven't been to the beach in a year. And I live, I live two blocks from it. I have not been on the sand.
We, we say the same thing. We said that would never happen.
So, but I, I think those are the things that we do need to look at, that we can develop all these attractions for visitors, but is it serving the people who live here?
And, and I'd expand on that a little bit by saying, you know, I'm, I'm as much an opponent of the big box as, as the next guy because, you know, I, in many cases, I just don't like the concept. It's just a bias. But if it's that kind of thing that takes, is necessary to create an anchor within a community, you know, there's got to be some, some way to make that work. As an example, Target has just downsized their store footprints. They've now got a small Target. There's not a Target within a hundred miles of us right now. Would that be something that, you know, the city should encourage so that instead of everybody running to Newport, everybody in Newport runs to Lincoln City?
Well, we could follow up our discussion tonight with, um, thinking about what is it about big box that we don't like? What is it about big box that is acceptable or could be acceptable, given certain standards?
That we do like. That we do like, because I do like them, so.
Or what is, what is, what is an unfounded bias?
Jobs.
Yeah.
Services.
Right.
And, and how can they work within our restrictions? Because you said we have a six thousand square foot.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand square foot footprint, but you've got three layers to that. So there's a hundred and eighty square feet available. Is there any flexibility within the big box stores to go up, not shop?
Sure. Target weds of the second story of the Galleria.
Yeah, some places.
That, my old neighborhood in southeast, too.
You know, also, I don't know if people realize, but it's sixty thousand square feet per building. Doesn't mean you can't put two sixty thousand square foot buildings next to each other, you know, with, with a separation. You know, the garden center here, garden and hardware and whatever, and the food and clothing and whatever else in the other building. You know, it's another possibility, too.
Most of these places are cookie cutter.
Right.
Kind of operations, though. They say, okay, we're going to build it. A few days later, it's there.
I mean, I've, I've worked with Walmarts when I was in Orlando and I can tell you that, I mean, we would have to change our ordinance before they had changed their footprint of a building. And this, like you said, they're cookie cutter and they just, they're not going to put a two-story Walmart in Lincoln City. I mean, or anywhere for that matter, most likely. And it may be New York City, but, you know, other than that, what, they would, they would have to do something.
You know, what, part, part of what, you know, I find attractive, you know, in some of these big box stores, and I use the word guardedly because they don't have to be that big. For example, New Seasons, modest-sized stores that cater to a certain clientele. It becomes a magnet. Within, say, the Portland area, if, you know, when you're looking around for, for a home, and if you are that, you know, of that particular mindset, you look to be located near a New Seasons. Same way with a Target. You know, it has a certain cachet. Now, granted, it's not Nordstrom's, but it is certainly not a Buy Mark. And I don't mean that in a negative sense. It, it caters to a certain group of people that have money, have discretionary income. Same way with Sur La Top, which was one of the anchor stores there in Enco Station, certain kinds of folks. You know, and I, and I think part of the, the planning process is probably to encourage that kind of development that can then further bring in more people. Right now, we probably don't have a whole lot of cachet.
Well, I don't know if we have the full-time residents to, to support it.
Well, it may be, you know, one of those chicken and egg arguments.
Exactly. And that gets back to, you know, the mixed, mixed-use housing.
Right.
Because I, I've just had this, again, I was from southeast Portland, and the Safeway and Target, they built above, and it's senior housing. And it's worked out beautifully for them and for everyone. And Russellville Station now is the same way. They're on 102nd. It's the same principle built up. And every time I drive through Ocean Lake, I just go, why don't we go up here? You've got this beautiful walk area and you're just walks from the beach and it's just, go up a few floors.
Rich, you said it was forty foot with our height limit in?
Forty-five.
In most places, it's forty-five feet. There are places where it's less, like Taft's thirty-five or thirty-eight, Nelskut and Ocean Lake's thirty-five as far as commercial development.
No, because, I mean, the way it is, the way the city's laid out, I mean, like you said, 101, trying to get stuff off of it's a great idea, but at the end of the day, where, where are we going to go with it between 101 and the ocean? Everything seems to be pretty much locked in residential now. There doesn't seem to be a lot of open space there. I mean, I know there's, I think the city owns the lot on, we were talking about Northwest 15th Street. And I think that lot, that vacant lot there's to be owned right now. But it's not enough to really put something, you know, something that's going to create a lot of jobs.
Exactly.
There. So, and it seems like without, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's kind of one, do you bring in, do you bring in business that creates jobs that more, then you can get these other businesses that we have in Portland into here that, you know, we can support them full-time? Or are we, you know, still catering to, to the tourists? And if you really, I mean, in my opinion, anyway, our, the ocean, at the end of the day, it's still, that's our greatest asset. And it's, and I think it's going to be and always going to be. And an example would be, we brought a casino, you know, the casino came in here and I wasn't here then. I think it was nineteen ninety, something like that, where the casino came here. And once people realized how great that was doing, Grand Ron did one better, bigger, I should say. I don't want to say better, but it was bigger. So what, what stops people from just stopping there in Grand Ron and gambling, other than coming out to the casino on the coast? And that is that we're on the coast. That means the people are going to the beach. The same thing with the Outland Mall. When they put the Outland Mall in here, people were coming from Portland. But now, if you just want to go shopping at the Outland Mall, you'd stop in Woodburn because it's a bigger Outland Mall. It's got more stuff there. So why would you come all the way to this Outland Mall unless you're going to make a weekend out of it and you come?
Right. We're at the beach. They don't have that. So that, it still, so it kind of gives us our, our edge.
Well, that's, is, you're right. I mean, that's, that's the edge we're always going to have. And we need to play off of it in everything.
I agree.
Everything that we do. But not, again, I would argue, not limiting ourselves purely to the 101 corridor.
Right.
You know, there's got to be, and of many of these things that we've talked about tonight, you know, you know, another area of mixed use that I'd point you to is Lake Oswego, when they did the development downtown, block 138. I happened to be the secretary for the redevelopment authority, and how they packed housing above retail.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, very, very deliberately. Now, they didn't do anything to encourage Intel or whatnot. They, you know, they really are not set up for heavy-duty industrial, except further out in Lake Grove, you know, toward I-5. They've got a lot of commercial land out there that they're available. But, you know, again, part of it was very, very deliberate to do that, sort of vertically mixed use development.
Right. We allow vertical mixed use, you know, in the general commercial zone. It used to be prohibited, but we do allow it now. We, we require it in part of Taft. And we also allow it in, uh, Nelskut and Ocean Lake in parts of it. The idea of encouraging that kind of thing. And also just make better use of the existing infrastructure.
Well, I was going to go find a, we have a couple photos of mixed use. But let's move, move a little further into the slideshow. We've got recreational commercial is another commercial zone here. And basically, that is oriented towards the tourist, the hotels, motels, restaurants.
Gift shops.
Gift shops.
That's another forty-five-foot height limit period. And both of these, the general commercial and recreation commercial, until recently, were the only commercial zones we had in the city. And they're basically, you know, the two citywide commercial zones.
And then, did we develop the commercial design standards before the other districts?
After.
After the other districts? Um, we have a special zone for the Taft area. It's called the Taft Village Core. And that was the first one, I believe, right?
Yeah, it was, this was after the city adopted the String of Pearls concept, where we had the, the seven sort of nodes idea.
Do you know what we're talking about? Okay.
My wife grew up here, so I'm.
Oh, okay. All right.
Pretty familiar with it, yeah.
Taft was the first, and it incorporates a, a number of changes from the, the other commercial zones, the existing, then existing commercial zones of the city. One was that the height limit was reduced from forty-five feet to thirty-eight feet. They capped the number of motel rooms that are allowed there, two-hundred-and-twelve. Banned auto-oriented uses. The idea of being this would be a pedestrian-oriented area, so there wouldn't be drive-throughs, no gas stations, no new car dealers or anything. Established three different edge treatments. I don't know if you can, yeah. This shows there were three edge treatments. And depending on exactly where you're located, determines what you have to do. Like on the, those red lines, that's edge treatment A. The blue lines, or the, sorry, the green lines is B. And the one yellow line along inlet, which is on the, the north side of Highway 101 there, the northeast side is, was called edge treatment C. If you look the, the, on the left there, that is what you have to do in edge treatment A, which is basically build right up to the property line. No breaks in the buildings. Edge treatment, well, some breaks for, you could be pedestrian-oriented facilities or ways to get to the, to get to parking and that kind of thing. Edge treatment B in the middle there is some setback and also some pedestrian-type facilities. Edge treatment C, which is again, is just that one area on the west side of inlet, which is basically like the back of Ace Hardware down there, is, there's parking between the buildings and the, and the street. If you're in edge treatment A, you have to have mixed use. All new, new construction in edge treatment A. If you can go back a slide, there's all those, all those red lines, edge treatment A, have to have mixed use. There also are a number of other standards for, for Taft is all parking, there's reduced amount of signage that's, that's allowed. It's called a transparency standard so that when you're on, when you're walking along the sidewalk, you need to be able to see into the building. That's the idea, is make it, make it, make, make you want to go in. So rather than going past a blank wall, you had to be able to see into it. There's a fifty percent transparency requirement down there for new commercial buildings.
Windows.
Windows and doors that you can see through, basically.
One thing I don't see down there is there's a lot of foot traffic on 101, except on the Fourth of July. You're down near Mo's, Eleanor's Undertone, so forth. That's where everybody's at. And there's not a lot of business down there. It's very limited because mostly, you know, it's lodging and people's vacation homes or rentals, VRDs. I'm assuming, I don't know for a fact, that there are VRDs down there. I don't see as much foot traffic out on 101 that I like to see, even on a busy summer day.
Why do you think that is?
Like the bayfront Newport and Depot Bay and so forth, where sidewalks are packed shoulder to shoulder all day long until the sun goes down. I don't know.
Well, there's nothing to visit there.
There's nothing to walk down the line.
There's nothing that desirable.
Yeah. You can go from Rack's Place, which is empty and has been, been empty for six, seven years, and then to Ace and Shuckers. And I mean, there's just, there's not, there's a couple. You've got, you know, the photo gallery and the like, it's starting to build up there.
The Glass Factory.
Jennifer, I see.
Yeah, you get, I think it's getting there.
Down the West.
And Kenny's.
You've got some good chunks of property that are, you know, like, so that.
And just, just to that issue, is the lack of development there the result of insurance or financing provisions? Because when you try to get a mortgage in a flood zone, you have a lot of trouble getting one.
Absolutely. I haven't heard that, that complaint from anybody. I'm not saying it's not there. I'm just saying we haven't, I haven't heard it.
It is a complaint. I'm just saying it as something that maybe, you know... It is a complaint, I'm just saying it as something that maybe, you know, in spite of the best intentions, may be working completely contrary to what is going to really happen. Because we could have all the plan we want for things to go there. But unless somebody is able to chow a pocket, build it, or to bring their retail in, you've got a plan that is non-functional just because of impacting economic factors.
Right, well, my wife and I were looking at the old community college to purchase that. And after we found out about all the FEMA businesses, this is not gonna work. I cannot lay out that much cash to improve this property. And then if I did, I could only do this much at this time and this much at this time. It just wasn't gonna work.
You know, I wonder if it might not be useful, talking about visioning, is to get some of the insurance.
I agree.
Here to talk about what impact their industries have on planning.
I can tell you this much, our FEMA regulations will allow development in this area. The particular building that Don mentioned is an existing building. And, but it requires quite a bit of rehab, more than fifty percent of the existing value.
Right.
And that triggers FEMA requirements. That means that if you want to put that kind of investment in an old building, you have to elevate the structure.
Right.
And.
That's a beautiful property.
Maybe that's just not possible in that case. But if you're building from scratch, if you're building from a, from grade, you know, nothing there, then again, you have to build one foot above the base flood elevation. And that is to protect the owner, but also to protect the National Flood Insurance Program from claims. So that's why, that's why we have that regulation.
But I, but I think, I worked in the Gulf Coast and I've worked in Florida, I even work there now, you know, on projects that are in, in the floodplains and in, in the tidal surge areas. And I know how difficult it is for people to get even financing to purchase, build, or, or improve these, these kind of businesses, regardless of FEMA, regardless of the federal, on insurance programs. I think it is something that, it's overlooked many times. Those are really the things that govern whether or not businesses can get the loans that they need to establish them. And, you know, if insurance is, is, is the dog that's driving, that's something in our planning process, we need to know inside and out, creating planning zones viable, fundable through commercial loans, not just subsidies, not just improvement projects or, or things that are funded out of the tax. But if, if we have to fund it out of tax base to get people to come, then we probably missed the boat. You know, it should be viable with the right in it for trying to plan. Insurance companies and banks and the Wall Street investors, we, we're beating, beating ourselves to death.
I don't foresee this area changing anytime soon. I, I could see a smaller Enrico Station there if it could be built. I could see somebody come along and invest in Taft and basically mow it all down and start over. The grade school probably wouldn't still be sitting there. It'd probably be developed by now if it wasn't in such a low-lying zone. The old Taft Fire Station, the one you speak of, the opportunity came around to move the station, they moved the station. College took it, and they obviously knew they needed to move sooner or later.
Beautiful property.
So, you know, there's a lot of potential, but due to its geographical location right now and possibility of, you know, being affected by tsunami, I don't think it's gonna change anytime soon. It's gonna be putting Band-Aids on it for a long, long time.
But, you know, one thing too, that I've considered for, you know, we have the casino at the north end, and that will draw a large group of people for a singular event. We don't have anything like that in the south end. There's no singular event that we can point to in the south end that will bring a body of people. Maybe the, the fireworks on the Fourth. But are, is everyone staying?
Weekend of the month, right.
Yeah, exactly. Convention centers, and I'm not talking about huge, but I, I can point to Cannon Beach and their Christian Conference Center. You know, that's, I, I don't exactly have the figures on it, but I know that's a fairly well-used facility that draws several hundred people for each event that they sponsor. Now, I don't, it, it wouldn't be that difficult to build something that size.
You know, the city owns a decent-sized piece of chunk at the end of 51st Street, a decent-sized chunk of land at the end of 51st Street in Taft. And we've looked into the idea of, of a draw there, focusing particularly on the weather and tsunami museum center kinda thing. And the people we were dealing with, just, it doesn't pencil out. There's just, there's no way to pay for it.
Right.
And the city doesn't have the money to pay for it. And tried to do a public-private partnership, we looked into, and there was, nothing of any size would, would pencil out. It would have to be sort of, you know, build a, a mixed-use development and on the fourth floor have, you know, a little weather center kinda thing. Was, was about as far as it would go. But it just wasn't, wasn't economically viable to come up with something down there.
Talking about the old Hershey's property?
As a draw.
Pardon me? The old Hershey's property?
Exactly.
Yeah, that'd be a great little piece to develop.
And we also have bought some adjacent land too. Ultimately, something's gonna happen there. It was bought for, for redevelopment and perhaps, you know, economics change and.
What incentives can, can the city offer?
Pardon me?
What incentives can the city offer? You know, I know in Portland, you know, you look at the Pearl and there was all kinds of tax deferrals offered and, you know, really helped develop that area. And I don't know that we have that option here, but.
I guess we have it, there's not, there's not that much, you know, the tax isn't that great. You know, it's not that big a deal. And, and you know, there are things like the, the, it's called the vertical housing zone that we haven't adopted, but it's something that, that we're gonna be bringing out again for another look at. And that's just, basically, it's tax deferral on housing above the first floor.
Right.
Which, you know, every.
It's really attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a possibility.
You could build, you could build housing on the second floor at today's low rates of return on investment dollars. It's great.
Yeah, anything, anything better than zero is pretty good these days.
Well, any rental is better than putting your money in the bank today.
Right, and that kinda gets to, you know, what we're talking about in other committees, about the, you know, affordable housing. Cause I know one of the struggles I have is finding help, especially come summertime, because there's no affordable housing for a lower-wage worker or a family. Here in Lincoln City, it's tough. You know, they're usually coming in from Otis.
The council's gonna be having a workshop on that.
Right, right. But, you know, that's, I, I don't think we have to focus strictly on, is this gonna be just for families or full-time residents? But it can be, you know, people starting out, eighteen, nineteen-year-old, single people.
As fast as they move here, they move away. It's everywhere.
Okay, let's see here, let's move out of Taft then, and Ocean Lake.
That was our, our second Pearl that we looked at. And there's three sub-zones, as you can see. There's the Main Street Highway right along 101 there, sort of the, the dark red. Then the interior mixed-use in, in the lighter red. And then the blue is the oceanfront. It's all commercial. There's three variations on commercial zoning in there. They have, very similar in a lot of ways, but also different allowed uses, different, some different, other different provisions as well. The, and the Main Street Highway, for example, there can't be ground-floor housing. It has to be above the store. Here again, the, the height was reduced from forty-five feet to thirty-five feet. And things like lot coverage, allowed lot, lot coverage were increased, so.
Is there any view shed protection as part of the code?
Sorry?
Is there any view shed protection as part of that code?
No.
To encourage development? So if I built something, some, to see the ocean, someone could build directly in front of me then?
Yeah.
As long as it isn't over thirty-five feet.
Yeah, the basic rule is, if you want the view, buy it.
And that's true everywhere in town?
Yeah.
Makes it tough.
It does, and it, and it's, actually, it's one of the reasons that the thirty-five-foot height limit went in, instead of allowing forty-five feet to continue, is that residents to the east of the highway were particularly concerned about forty-five-foot buildings being built along Highway 101 and blocking their views. So the council decided to drop it to thirty-five feet.
But the topography's fairly steep there, so you could build up presumably to thirty-five feet and still not block the views
Yeah.
of the people behind you. Okay, there's Nelskott.
And Nelskott also has its, was, was the, the third Pearl. It has its own provisions, based a lot on what we did in Ocean Lake, but with a lot of sort of customizing for Nelskott itself, with particular emphasis, again, on walkability, on sort of real emphasis on preserving the existing character there. Allowing non-conforming structures that ordinarily wouldn't be able to be rebuilt, to be rebuilt, so that they could keep the same character that, that we have down there now. And also, it has three, three different zones. The Nelskott Business District along Highway 101, then to the west of that, then Nelskott Cottage Residential, to keep the cottage sense in there, allowing small lots and so on. And then the Nelskott Beachside Mixed Use along the, the ocean, a little bit inland in the southern part.
Any thoughts on that?
Oh, and also, that was another place where the height limit was dropped from forty-five feet to thirty-five feet. And along 101, there was also, or it is on 101, but I, there was also talk of even reducing the, the height limit in the, in the cottage area to thirty feet. But that didn't get any traction, so we kept it thirty-five feet.
I'm gonna go back to something real quick. You may be getting ready to cover it there, I saw 15th Street look like there. But when we were talking about Taft, you said any new development down in Taft is required, on the, on the highway at least anyway, it may be all of Taft, is required mixed use?
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay. So it's basically, we're trying to encourage the, the commercial residential on top type
Right.
of atmosphere there. So someone couldn't come in then at this point and just, you know, put in, in just a strictly commercial use on the property?
Right.
Okay.
Anything in the, that's where you see the red line?
Right.
Sounds like the old pines would, I'd say where.
The old pine, right. That would be a perfect example. Somebody wanted to redevelop that site, they would have to do ground-floor, commercial of some kind, and then mix residential above it.
Could they do residential behind it?
Possibly behind it. I don't, I don't think we say it has to be on the, on the, it doesn't, I don't think it says that residential can't be on the ground floor. But I think we'd have to be behind it.
Yeah.
I know that Nelskott, the, the strip that I'm in, has seen a lot of foot traffic, especially with the development of Olivia Beach. Now, you're just two blocks from the beach, you've got good public parking. Visually, it, it's inviting.
Yeah, dude.
There's only four of us open right now. You know, unfortunately, there's an empty building, two doors down from me, right next to the, the deck. And then the operator of the store next to me has not been open for over two years. She's just, everything's still in the store, but hasn't been open in two years. So it's, I, I've seen a lot of disappointment. People come thinking, oh, this is kind of, I'll say a Depot Bay kind of attraction. Where you can walk in all these different shops, and then they go, oh, restaurant, restaurant.
I mean, going, going back to earlier discussion, I mean, the driver on all of this is people, and the driver for people are jobs. And the driver for jobs is enough of that kinda development that brings opportunities for people to be here. I mean, you know, there's, there's a root cause analysis here that I think we need to, you know, look at if we're, if we're talking about zoning and, and other kinds of activities, that what, what causes an area to be successful? You know, Dennis mentioned a Enrico Station in Intel. You know, Lake Oswego in its own right is successful, sort of, because of what it is. Southeast Portland, you know, again, jobs and, and the atmosphere, you know, that is attractive to people to be in that location.
Well, and cheaper housing.
And cheaper housing vis-à-vis, you know, or relative to Portland's cost. But what is it that, what is, what is the sizzle that we've got for the state? We've got the ocean, but.
So do a lot of other places.
Yeah, I, I think there's a big coast mine up and down.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of, I remember when I first moved here, people would say, oh, we don't wanna be another Cannon Beach. Well, you know, I can understand that in some way. You don't wanna be snooty, but you know, what's wrong with a thriving, attractive community? You know?
You bypass.
Yeah, one of the, one of the advantages is they're not on 101 anymore. It was bypassed.
One, I guess you could call it an industry that's growing here, is the retirement community.
Absolutely.
So we have tourism, but we also have a lot of people who are retiring here. And retirees need support services as well as retail. So maybe we have to look at that. And then, of course, you have the health industry.
You know, maybe, maybe that is, you know, the germ of something. You know, there are developers in the, in the adult, senior living, assisted living, first care, all of that sort of thing, that are always looking for opportunities and locations that make their business pencil, which includes the availability of trained staff to work, yada, yada, yada. So again, you know, you need a parcel of a certain size to do that. You need about an acre to make it work. You know, anything less than that is, is really tough. But when, you know, and I, and I say this, you know, as a, as someone on the, on the far-left political spectrum, but we have to strive, and we have to drive the jobs, so that people have a reason to be here to do all of the rest of this.
They have to be able to afford to live here.
They have to need, they need to be.
And that's, that's, you know, those levels I'm talking about. Cause for me, as a restaurant, nine bucks plus tips, it's gonna mean an apartment for that person. You're talking about managed care, that's, they're not gonna work for that wage. They're, they're gonna need a, a good living wage, and they're gonna need a nicer, not nicer, but a, a little more expensive place to live, but yet they're not in the retirement zone, where they're gonna have a half-a-million-dollar piece of property. We need that kinda mixed residential.
It's, yeah, it's certainly a three-dimensional chess game to try to balance all of this in.
You know, there has been in, in the past, you know, the city has looked at, you know, what can we do to drive economic development? And, you know, Intel's not gonna build a plant here.
Probably.
You know, the water, transportation, communications, there's issues there. And it's, it's come down to, you know, repeated analysis, is tourism's the name of the game right now. And there are things related, you know, a big part of our economy is transfer payments, because of retirees coming here. You know, they bring money from outside, just because their pension is a transfer payment, and so, but I, I think the idea that we can get some big industry here is not gonna happen. Well, what can happen is small industries, you know, the very small shops, the startup shops, we can build on, on internet and that kinda thing, where people, they also build on people working from home.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the other models focuses on the community college as your business incubator. And, you know, how do you have the public-public partnership to drive the private partnership? How does the city work with the community college such that the course offerings dovetail into the industrial needs that the city wants to attract? So it's, you know, it's not just any one group working by themselves. You know, if we say, well, we've got. You know, if we say, well, we've got land, we want to attract, you know, a small industrial development or a small software firm or whatnot, well, where do they get the people from? Do we have the graduates from the high schools that know how to write code? Do we have the people at the community college that are going to be able to teach this kind of thing so that we've got a labor pool that we can work with? Or do we have to send everybody off to Chomekada?
Well, and do we have the cultural, what's the word I'm looking for? The difference between Portland and Lincoln City is, you know, I can...
Small.
Yeah, I mean, I can go to all kinds of places. I can go to all kinds of restaurants. I can go to all theaters. I can go to ballgames. I can go to, you know, you name it, I can do it in Portland. Is that same draw here? I can go to work, but then after I'm done with work, what can I do?
Casino where the sidewalks roll up, yeah?
Well, yeah.
You could have it away.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of that, you know, it's a small town and come winter, we're significantly smaller.
So is Redmond. Redmond's a small town. They've now got all of those server farms out there. Again, we can't get server farms because of some of the points you've mentioned, but are there other things that are not as dependent upon that heavy civil infrastructure that we could attract?
Right, I was just kind of piggybacking on what you were saying about the community college being an incubator, you know, keeping those, the young folks here, growing up, go to school, stay, and just, you know, what can we offer them?
One thing that I've heard a few times around is from early twenty-somethings that there is nothing for them to do in Lincoln City. They are in such a hurry to get out of here, they can't stand themselves, because there's nothing for them to do. There's no entertainment. There's no way to find a significant other.
Bury them off soon.
It's just something to think about is, how do we keep them here beyond college?
Right, and that's that balance between residents and visitors.
Exactly.
How do we find that? And can that satisfy both parties, which I think it would?
But I would also, you know, to your point, raise the question of how many people are leaving because they can't find a job other than the minimum wage?
Right.
If they could find a job here, you know, at fifteen or twenty dollars an hour, I'll bet they'd stay. I mean, this is, you know, a very attractive place to start.
Well, the one thing that we can say about our schools to an extent, or at least campus, is you can go K through fourteenth grade in, I don't know, that might be forty acres, fifty acres, I'm not sure. So if you have enough housing around there, some affordable housing, some single-family dwellings, maybe some duplexes and so forth, you can feasibly have your kids start kindergarten and stay there till two years of college. But the right incentives are out there. But again, where are the jobs after that? There's nothing we really have for them here, so they end up packing their bags and moving away. But they kept them here for fourteen years. At least that kept the family around for a while. And the empty nesters, maybe they stick around.
Well, and that, you know, and that may be in terms of the visioning for the community, that investment's already been made. It's not like we need to go out and replicate with a magnet. We need to perhaps build on it with zoning and other kinds of activities around there and key off of everything that the educational system's trying to do to attract business with good wages. And it's not, yes, it's tourism, yes, you know, the ocean's there, but a lot of places have oceans.
Well, the casino, love it or hate it kind of thing, has actually brought a, I first got here, the casino wasn't here yet. And I would have never pictured the casino ever being here, the kind of entertainment we see in town, the amount of people that come to town because of the casino and the available wages that the casino can generate and has probably brought a lot of people to live in this community. I can't imagine what we'd be like without that right now. So love it or hate it, it's done a lot for this community.
It's a great job generator. I mean, there are hundreds of jobs.
I don't remember the old numbers, but it seems to me five to eight hundred, you know, depending on the time of the year and so forth. And a lot of those jobs can pay, you know, twenty bucks an hour or more. We can't bring another casino to town.
One's enough, okay.
Enough.
Okay. Mixed use, I think we've already covered that. So I think that's basically what we have for you this evening. We've already been getting the answer to what would you like to see more of and what would you like to see that we don't have already? So if you want to continue this discussion, expand it, we will, next time maybe talk, bring some more details about big-box development or industrial development opportunities.
I still have a question about storefronts. And I know that when I was buying my, or opening my business, the urban renewal dollars were there for low interest loans.
Right.
To, you know, for facade improvement. Is that available? Will that be available after the sunset? How are we going to encourage these businesses with really some really unattractive storefronts to upgrade? How will we move them to make it more attractive?
We can come back with information on that.
Yeah.
You know, again, I would like to, as part of this discussion, to get to that core issue for some of these areas that may be impacted by insurance and banking, to understand better what that means to us, so that when we're planning, we're not, you know, planning toward the eye of the storm.
Right.
So to speak. I mean, if, and I don't necessarily mean FEMA. I mean, you know, I think that's pretty well-understood. We know where the bright lines are drawn and those sorts of things. But I'm talking about, you know, somebody from the insurance industry who talks about issues about being able to insure a structure that you want to build in a certain area or someone from banking who can generally talk to about the availability or unavailability of loans for businesses or any kind of development in this day and age, not ten years ago, but post-Sumatra, post-Japan. And what does that mean? Now, I know, you know, I follow the insurance industries and, you know, they're just running for cover on exposure to all of this sort of thing. And if you can't get insurance, you can't get a loan.
And I think you make a good point that the insurance industry has tremendous amount of impact that we may not even realize on what can happen in our economy. In a past life, I did a lot of oil spill-related work, prevention and response, and would hear the government saying to the oil companies, you have to do X, Y, and Z and they're responsible. There's no way we can do that. We can't afford that. It's just, we just can't do it. It's totally unworkable. Then the insurance company would say, you have to do X, Y, and Z, and no problem, you know, because if they want to be insured, they're going to do it. And so they were really driving what happens and they...
I think a lot of those things that we don't normally think about are really the prime drivers.
Yeah.
And I guess it's taken me, you know, sixty-eight years to get there, you know, to realize there are things beyond our control that have a huge impact on what we can do.
And then one thing too, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
It was just, I remember when Mayor Anderson first became mayor, one of the issues he brought up was public restrooms and the lack of them, or we need an upgrade of the ones we have. And I don't know if that's something germane to this discussion, if anything's moving on that.
Interestingly, it is a factor, because again, in this report we had done from Destination Development Company, we'll get you copies of this as part of our Buildable Lands thing, one of the things they talked about is reasons for people to get out of the car. And one of them is have a restroom, you know, there, a public restroom that people can use and it's convenient.
Nell Scott.
It's nice and, you know, and so it's a surprising factor in economic development is public restrooms.
Yeah.
The Parks Department, it seems to me, said they have nineteen restrooms that they have to maintain, and it's a struggle. And especially because sometimes people want to live in the restrooms. And, you know, I mean, so it goes way beyond what you would normally think of in terms of maintaining restrooms. So it's a money thing too.
I think Mayor Adams probably has a couple for sale that he tried to roll out in Portland.
The charging stations, are they doing much for us? Do we have any way to track?
We're getting a little beyond zoning here.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
I don't know.
I know, it got us all...
Tracking anybody?
We got a lot of...
How, we can go down the beach and we got to go through Lincoln City because they have charging stations?
We got a lot of press, very positive press on them, you know, not just local, but, you know, area-wide. And I think, you know, the people that have electric vehicles, I think, paid attention. I don't know how many there are, but, you know, as gas prices go up, electrical vehicles get more and more appealing to some people. And the idea of having a place to plug them in. And we may have been, you know, ahead of the game, a little bit premature perhaps in some people's minds, but I think that ultimately, I think it's going to prove to be a good thing. And it's one more thing that can be a draw, now that may be just for a few people, but it'd be a draw and also says something about the values of the community as well.
If I could ask another question. Previous meeting, you talked about perhaps changing conditional use zoning to, for like churches, having a church zone and things like that. And I just kind of wanted to follow up, because I'm not clear on what would be the difference? To just say, okay, instead of a conditional use, this is now a church zone?
It's now equivalent outright use.
Right.
You don't have to go through a hearing.
Okay.
It's just if you meet whatever the standards are, you can do it. And it's not a matter of, okay, well, you know, you have to, you know, no loud singing, you know.
But then if we change it to that, to say from, give a conditional use for a church in a residential area and call it a church zone, could it ever not be that again?
It might make...
Because somehow, some churches can be converted to a house, I mean...
It might end up excluding some uses, right.
Yeah, so.
Right.
I was just curious about those.
We weren't talking, well, we weren't talking about a church, we're talking about schools as...
Right, but I think that it came up in discussions to either or. Either, I'm not concerned one way or the other.
It'd include all of those.
Yeah. But then, could it be changed back? If we have something that's a school, say it's a private academy that's a school and meets the criteria, but then at some point they say, oh, we can't make a go of it anymore, would it have to be a school that took that place or is that...
Well, zoning can always be changed, but that's a, you know, it's a legislative decision for the council. But, you know, I mean, it can be done.
Okay. Just curious.
We'll have to give that more thought when we get to that ordinance.
Okay.
Just one other thing, Madam Chairperson. If there are not agenda items that require meetings of the Planning Commission, has any thought ever been given to moving to a monthly meeting so that staff is not having to come out several nights for minimal agenda usefulness?
We have on occasion canceled the meetings where we have nothing in particular to bring forward. Given that we have a lot of new members on the commission and I want to sort of treat the light agendas as opportunities for training and discussion and so on.
I'm actually more concerned about you guys' time than our time.
We don't have lives, so...
Well, don't say I never asked.
Okay.
Okay, is that, is that it for us? Okay.
Thank you.
Interesting.
It was.
Okay, we've made it to number nine, reports and comments. Richard, do you have any?
No, nothing.
Deborah?
No idea.
Anything? We have no city attorney tonight, planning commissioners? Okay, public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing? Public. Future agenda items?
We have nothing in particular for the next meeting. We can do more of the same.
You know, I guess my only caveat would be, does that give you enough time to really pull all of your research together? And, you know, if it does, the answer is probably, yeah, let's do it, but, yeah.
If it looks bad, we'll let you know, so.
All right, thank you. Next meeting is Tuesday, March 20th, 2012, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.